We are live.
Call to order the Aridale County Board of Commissioners, six o'clock regular meeting for Tuesday, April the fifteenth, 2025. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner Brown to give the indication for the Board of Commissioners as we seek guidance and wisdom in the work we are about to do for the citizens of Aridale County.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we thank you once again for bringing us together here tonight. We thank you for all these things that you've helped us with to make decisions on. We ask you to help us to do the right things for the people of this county, Lord. We thank you for the safe journey here and the safe journey home, Lord, and we ask you be with each and every one of us, for us in Christ's name and sake we do pray. Amen.
Amen. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Howe to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask County Manager, do we have any adjustments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. We do have one addition, and that's under closed session, which would be property acquisition. First, I went to North Carolina General Statute 143 318 11A 5.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve our agenda as suggested.
Motion made by Vice Chair Neder. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Following our agenda for this evening, we do not have any presentation or special recognitions and awards. We do not have an appointment before the board. We do not have a public hearing tonight. Now brings us down to our administrative matters that we covered by consent at our four o'clock pre-agenda meeting. I'd like to turn it back over to County Manager.
Thank you, Chair Conley. As our chair said, we meet at four o'clock for our pre-agenda meeting and go over all of these items in detail. The following items were agreed to place on the consent agenda. A request from the Register of Deeds to adopt a resolution in support of North Carolina Senate Bill 248 to allow local Register of Deeds offices the authority to access vital records, as well as issue certified copies of abstracts of new birth certificates for all North Carolina citizens, including those who have been adopted. A request from Cool Springs Volunteer Fire Department to appoint Chris Carter to their Relief Fund Board of Trustees. A request from Cooperative Extension to provide an update on the greenhouse project by the Horticulture Agent Melinda Roberts. And that, it was agreed by consent to revisit this during the budget workshop that we will be having in May, May the twelfth, thirteenth, and fourteenth. A request from the Finance Department for approval of fiscal year 2526 spending plan for the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council in the amount of $405,670. A request from the Finance Purchasing Division to consider an office, or excuse me, consider an offer for an adoption of a resolution to sell the Hickory Highway property, and that's located at 3876 Hickory Highway. The initial offer was $43,680, and that will begin the upset bid process. A request from Health Department for approval of additional environmental health fees regarding swimming pool fees and increases to existing fees. And this is for commercial swimming pools, and this was approved by the Board of Health. A request from the Health Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 37 to accept the Good Neighbor State Farm grant in the amount of $8,000, and that will be going towards car seat safety and education. A request from the Health Department for approval of the fee policy and proposed fee schedules for fiscal year 25 through 26. A request from Aridale County Parks and Recreation to update the pool shade structures at the Recreation Center. The money was already appropriated in this current fiscal year budget, but we had asked them to go out and seek grants if possible, but they have not been successful. So it was agreed by consent to go ahead and move forward to expend those funds for those shade structures. Just a side note, the pool will open on May the 24th. A request from Tax Administration for approval of the March 2025 releases and refunds. And finally, a request from Administration to approve the minutes from the March 18th, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting.
Do we have a motion to approve the pre-agenda consent matters?
Make a motion to approve consent, pre consent.
Motion by Commissioner Stroud. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Those items are all approved. Following the agenda, brings us down to the announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions, and I'll turn it back over to the County Manager to go over those.
Thank you, Chair Conley. The following are openings and vacancies that we have on various boards and committees. If anyone is interested in learning more about these, please visit our website, or you can contact our clerk to the board. And the application is on our website, as well as Mr. Besk can get you an application. We have six appointments available with the Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, Nursing Home Advisory Committee, six appointments. Troutman Board of Adjustment ETJ Representative, one appointment. Troutman Planning Board ETJ, two appointments. Centralina Workforce Development Board, three appointments. Centralina Aging Advisory Committee, Region F, four appointments. Mooresville Planning Board ETJ, one appointment. And Mooresville Board of Adjustment ETJ, two appointments. And just for clarification, ETJ stands for extra jurisdiction, territorial jurisdiction. So it's not inside those corporate limits, but it's in their planning jurisdiction. So if you have questions of whether you are in that area, we can help you, or Troutman or Mooresville can help you determine whether you're in that ETJ area.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. We do not have any appointments to boards and commissions for this evening. Anyone have any unfinished business at the six o'clock hour? Brings us down to public comment period, second meeting of the month. The board conducts a public comment period at its regular meeting, second meeting each month. The purpose of the public comment period is to allow citizens to speak on matters related to county government. Each speaker that has signed up is allotted to three minutes and will be called to the podium by the chair, and the order names appear on the sign-in sheet. Please state your name and your address before beginning your comments. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole. Responses by the board are at their discretion, but the public comment period is not intended to be a question and answer period, but rather a time for the board to hear from the public and to take such matters raised under advisement. Citizens are expected to be civil in their language and presentation and not engage in slander or name-calling. Citizens should not discuss any matters which are closed-session matters, including but not limited to matters regarding personnel or matters which are made confidential by law. Speakers who have prepared written remarks or supporting documents are encouraged to leave a copy of such remarks and documents with the clerk to the board. At this moment, I'd like to open up the public comment period, and the first person signed up will be Stephanie Frank. If you will, just approach and name and address.
Hi. My name is Stephanie Frank. I live at 698 Langtree in Mooresville. Please bear with me, I'm a little nervous. But I'm here today on behalf of concerned residents on the Langtree Peninsula. We love our community, and short-term rentals, specifically those allowing excessive guests and promote party atmosphere, are destroying our quality of life. I want to make one thing clear. We are not against responsible short-term rentals. We do understand their role in tourism and local economy, but what we're dealing with is something beyond that. Some of these properties have been transformed into full-scale event venues, complete with pools, fire pits, mini golf, and even sports courts. One short-term rental in our neighborhood advertises sleeping up to 30 guests. This property was sold in 2022 as a four-bedroom property. This is not home sharing. This is a business operating in the middle of a residential neighborhood. The result, loud parties, excessive traffic, trespass, vandalism, and trash left behind. Neighbors cannot enjoy their own yards from spring to fall. One couple has even sold their home and moved after four decades of living there, all because of the disruptions next door and continued additions of outdoor party amenities. Let me ask you, what would you do if a group of strangers showed up next to your home every weekend through loud parties, attempted to use your private property, and ignored your right to peace and privacy? Because that's exactly what's happening here. Commissioners, I am aware that you've already taken action. In October 2023, you passed new regulations to curb these issues, and that is very much valued, and I do hope you know that it is. But since property owners have sued the county and enforcement has been put on hold while the case is dragged through the courts, it leaves us, the residents, to suffer the consequences. We're asking you to fight for us. We need your leadership to ensure these regulations don't get watered down or delayed indefinitely. The county took a stand for responsible regulation, and now we ask you to stand firm. We, the residents, are also taking action. We're reporting issues to short-term rentals, or Airbnb, to law enforcement, to various Aridale County departments, including your offices. We're attending meetings and contacting our state representatives, but we need you to see us and to hear us, and we need your support. We are asking you to do four things. Push for the enforcement of the short-term rental regulations as soon as legally possible. Continue defending these rules against legal challenges, because without them, our neighborhoods will continue to be overrun. Help us keep these issues a priority by holding discussions and seeking stronger local and state-level solutions, and let us know what we, the residents, can do in the interim. This isn't just a few problem houses or about a few problem houses. It's about protecting our neighbors and the character of our neighborhood, and ensuring that Aridale County remains a place where families can live peacefully. Thank you for your time, your service, and your commitment to the people who live here. We're counting on you.
Okay. Thank you. Maureen Alango.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm also speaking about the party house concerning 30 people that I live behind. They have placed an eight-foot wall so we couldn't see what was happening. My husband and I, excuse my voice, I'm very hoarse, have built a handicap-accessible house that we could age in place in this quiet neighborhood off of Langtree. We live behind two lots that were once, that have been divided to three dwellings on two lots, which is illegal, we were told, and that they advertise for rentals to house 30 people in all three separate dwellings. This property is owned by a large LLC in Texas and rented by Mercurius Rentals in Statesville. The property has had four bedrooms, three baths, and half baths when sold in 2021. By permanently separating the garage and remaking the workshop, it now is advertised as 11 bedrooms, seven full baths. All of this was done without permits or inspections. This property has been a nuisance in our neighborhood, disruptive, with large parties outdoor, jumping in the pool, hot tub, screaming till 3:00 a.m., and I personally called the police many times. So parking also is like all over the street with 18 cars and boats. They have also a permanent dumpster in the driveway. It was a residential community, yet this business continues to act like a resort. Stephanie mentioned how they have a lighted mini golf course, kids' playground, hot tub, fire pit, basketball, pickleball, volley sand court, volleyball court, but that's now near the front of the road, near the front of the house. Obnoxious. There must certainly be some county zoning permitting, environmental, and safety issues for this. And it definitely affects all of our property values and our sanity. So I ask you to please help all of our neighbors in this county that are dealing with this, and I respectfully thank you for doing your job.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Marlo. State your name and your address, please.
My name is Amy Marlo, and I live at 612 Lennis Mill Road, Union Grove. And I'm speaking regarding the upcoming of the proposal of the solar power plant there on 115. The terminology that should be used for this atrocity is not solar farms, because a farm, by definition, is, one, attractive land cultivated for the purpose of agriculture production; two, attractive land devoted to the raising and breeding of domestic animals; three, an area of water devoted to the raising, breeding, or production of a specific aquatic animal, as in a trout or oyster farm; number four, a plot of land that is used for growing food crops. Nothing about this solar plant promotes farming, so let's call it what it is. It is a disruption and disadvantage to our community and land. The glare off of the panels, at best, is a nuisance, at worst, a safety and fire hazard for nearby residents. My niece made an observation at a North Carolina solar plant, that everything around it looked dead. The inverters and transformers send out a noise frequency that can destroy the sensitive ecosystems and animals such as birds of prey and domestic pets by hearing a constant hum or sound from the panels. The power plant requires a significant amount of land to be cleared, a minimum of 20 acres, to put the panels on. While many people stand on the platform of save the earth, keep our water clean, save the animals, are we really concerned about the well-being of our land, earth, and communities? Solar plants harm local wildlife, especially birds, but also all other animals. The panels also contain toxins such as chromium and other leachable heavy metals. They also give off solar and electromagnetic radiation. When panels are broken, they can poison and harm the environment by releasing lead, arsenic, and silicon into the soil and contaminate our nearby water sources. There are also multiple lawsuits going on right now due to water and runoff contamination. The power plants also reduce our property values. While claiming to reduce costs, we have already learned through letter that Energy United plans to increase our power bills. We, as taxpayers, also absorb the cost of not only setup and maintenance, but disposal cost in the years to come. Even after the 30-year estimated usage period, the land is deemed unusable for an additional 10 to 15 years pending cleanup, recyclability, and proper disposal. The EPA considers solar panel waste as hazardous. Let's not fail to mention that these are a visual eyesore to our natural landscape. They also create a warmer environment known as the heat island effect. Q and the global warming activists. None of this information is new to the company or unknown factors. They are well aware of the dangers and disadvantages of living near a solar power plant. Let's introduce some solutions now. Put them on already standing power poles, put them on city building roofs, design safer and smaller alternatives. We live in a country that is known for inventions and ingenuity, so let's prove it. Offer incentives for inventions and ideas for this to be healthy and affordable. Let's put our money where our mouth is and truly care about our plant, our animals, and our neighbors.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Burgess. If you will, sir, just state your name and your address, please.
My name is Bill Burgess. I live at 308 Rupert Road. I'm here to talk about the proposed solar farm at Rupert Road in 115. I stand against it, ask you to not consider it, for the reasons that the lady just spoke before me, environmental, and also health reasons involved for people that have certain conditions that will truly make their lives worse. I appreciate your time, and again, I say that the lady before me, she spoke everything I need to say, so I ain't gonna waste no more of your time. Well, thank you again for hearing me.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Susan, you're gonna tell me with the last name again?
Oops, sorry. Susan DeJacomo, 326 Prospect Road. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity to speak, the open comments session. I wanted to mention that I appreciated Commissioner Niedler's remarks upon closing the April meeting, because she opined upon how you all take into consideration our concerns and the public safety of your community, and we truly appreciate that. We look to you to continue that particular path. Solar farms are touted as safe and effective by solar panel companies, green climate groups, and certain nonprofits. Like any consideration, it is important to follow the money. These groups share a common ideology and are funded through federal subsidies. So of course, their findings will support their ideology and their bias. And we know subsidy sources are drying up. This is a deep concern for the fact that the solar company is relying on that. They have said that, that they are relying on federal subsidies, and their CEO had also commented that he expects those subsidies to dry up for this year. So we've got some real concerns about how the county will pick up any of those funds that are necessary that are not going to be met by federal subsidies. The commissioners must fairly and objectively assess the well-being and safety of their community based on facts and reality rather than ideology and special interests. We have real concerns about the solar panel farms. Chiefly, as were mentioned before, in April, fires, which are common, property values decreasing, and very concerning, the water sources that are drying up. It is imperative to consider the plethora of experiences of citizens who have had to face the detrimental effects of solar farms in their area, including noise pollution, disruption of and damage to the environment, and to wildlife. There's many detrimental impacts to farmland. One of the things that has been noted is food source deterioration. Building solar farms on undeveloped land requires removing the above-ground vegetation, which I'm sure you probably have already understood that from ICAST, that many animals rely on for food. Removing this greenery has a ripple effect on the entire ecosystem of an area. For example, insects won't be able to feed, and birds won't have insects to eat, so they'll migrate, leaving predators without prey and affecting the entire food chain. Noise pollution dramatically impacts animals, as well as people in the area right outside the solar farm. And I seem to have lost her. There it is. Navigation. Some animal species rely on frequencies and echoes to avoid obstacles and locate food sources. Noise pollution can disorient them and cause them to crash into obstacles. It's also been noted that airline pilots have found them to be disruptive in terms of the glare that is radiating off of the panels. In breeding, for many animals, breeding happens via mating rituals, which usually require particular calls to attract the opposite sex. The sound can get drowned out by other low-frequency noise, like vehicle engines and machinery.
Tom.
Thank you for your time. I did also have a, and now I don't know where it went. I would like to also share at some point the sound that the inverters make, that impact.
Your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tyler Davis.
If you will, just state your name and address, please. My name is Tyler Davis. I live at 742 Stonecrest Drive. We are in the process of building up off of Coolbrook Road, and we are in opposition of not wanting the ICAST solar farm to go up over there. We had some family emergencies that have come up, so I'm not as prepared as I'd like to be. If I can, can I yield my time of remaining over to Susan?
Yeah, that'd be fun.
Okay. And thank you for hearing me.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Do I need to restart saying my name?
No.
No. Keep going. Okay. Thank you. Foraging. Some animals rely on their intricate hearing to survive. They use their hearing to locate prey and stay safe from predators. Noise pollution from solar panel construction can disturb these animals and cause them to become disoriented, affecting their ability to stay safe and find food. Communication. Animals use distinctive calls to communicate important messages about danger and finding their offspring. Noise pollution disrupts the pitches, and in this case, we are talking about the inverter noise, which is substantial, and I have heard recordings of that noise, but for some reason, it's not coming up currently on my phone. Maybe we can share it at a later date. If animals cannot share important messages with each other, it could affect their ability to bond and stay safe. Sorry, my nose is running. Please excuse me, I'm fighting a cold here. The other thing that I wanted to basically say is that we have a deep concern about property values decreasing, and that is something that I think can be attested to by any search of solar panels where they have gone in, in the solar array fields. Again, I don't really want to call them solar farms, because they are not. And also, there are many, many other examples of detrimental environmental concerns. In Idaho, potato farmers have found that the state representative determined that, based on the solar panel fields that were out there, they could not ever plant on them again because of the metal shards and the glass shards that remain from those solar panels. There is remarkable damage to solar panels due to hurricanes, tornadoes, lightning strikes, et cetera, that also cause fires, and those fires release PVA and other forever chemicals and Gen X chemicals into the air that poison the air and the water systems. We have a lot of concerns that really basically fall back on you to assess whether or not you think this is going to turn around and bite us in terms of any kind of lawsuits, which there are many lawsuits out there currently, and there are many Attorney Generals of states that are also suing, in particular, county commissioners and counties, for installing, passing these installations of the solar panel fields. So I really appreciate the fact that you guys are giving us time to talk about this. We will keep coming back. I do have one question, and that is, what is the particular forum and time?
Time. Next person is Kate Davis.
Hi, I'm Kate Davis. I live at 742 Stonecrest Drive. Right now, we are in the process of building a home off of Coolbrook Road. I'm here in opposition to the solar farms, and I just wanted to bring up one point that I thought might be valid, that I was looking over the Horizon Plan, the 2045 Horizon Plan for Aridale County, and it doesn't seem like this kind of industrial site is in line with keeping North Aridale as agriculture and preserving that community. That's all I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you. That is all that's signed up. Anybody else in the audience would like to speak on any matter. Hearing none of this. Hearing none and seeing none, I will close the public comment period. And moving down the agenda, we will come up to Commissioner updates, and I'd like to start with Commissioner Brown. Do you have anything?
I have nothing at this time.
Commissioner Stroud.
I continue to hear great things and appreciate the use of Jennings Park. And as with anything new, we have some growing pains that will have to be addressed. We understand and realize we have some parking issues, and there's some other issues we'll have to be working through, and it is going to be a work in progress. To the folks here about the solar, I will say, to this point, we are not aware of there's even a formal application, so there's nothing that would at us at this point. I do appreciate your input. I would encourage you as, if there are future meetings, whether they're community meetings or planning boards or this board, to continue to come to those meetings, to go to those meetings and be respectful, but state your feelings. So, pay attention with that, but we're not aware of any formal application that has been made, so there's no action or time limit that we can give you because it is not even in our purview. To those that came to speak about the short-term rentals, at this point, this board has done everything we legally can do. Our hands are tied at this point. This board made a very strong stance where other counties, I believe, have refused to go to, but we must abide by the law. And so, until some things get, and it's out of our control and out of our attorney's control and the folks, till we get something more, we wished we could say more or do more, but we cannot. We understand, we do hear you. Trust us, each one of us have heard, what would you do if it was next to you? Well, you know, it's so unique. I'm gonna want to tell a little story. I have a friend who said, "I want to move to the north end of the county," and where it's a little more rural and the farm. And this particular person, you know, finally bought a piece of land and then found out that there may be the operation of a real farm beside him with some smells. Well, now they don't want the smells. You know, we have to balance all of this out because there's five people making decisions for 200,000 people. And I will tell you, we said it early on, and especially in the rental situation, the wheels of justice turn slow, and we're gonna make sure we do whatever we do right and we do it legal. So, on both topics, we've heard you, we hear you loudly. And as meetings occur, especially when it's for that purpose, I encourage you to attend and say your piece.
Vice Chair.
And well said there, Commissioner Stroud, and I also want to say thank you for those who are also emailing your state representatives. That is important, reminding them that you live here and they represent you when they go to Raleigh. It's very important, too, to share the perspectives. I think it makes a really strong point when the homeowners tell what it's like to them so they have a strong voice saying, "Hey, this is what my people are going through." So, because we definitely see here tonight, yet they don't get that opportunity, the privilege to hear directly with the people. And it's very important that those, whether they respond or not, they are seeing them, they are receiving the emails, so keep that up. I'll be brief on this one, too. Updates mentioned at 4:00, the Health Department had an opportunity to showcase the things that they do. We have some amazing departments in Ardell County. I believe that we're blessed that we live in Ardell County, even with our challenges we do face. We're glad you live here. And also, continued classroom visits. It is the Easter season coming up, and I wish everyone a safe and happy holiday weekend and remembering what's really important, too, is taking care of each other and the holiday itself, and sacrifices that are made by those who protect us, as Brad always mentions, too, and our values. And I'll pass it on to him.
Mr. House.
Thank you. Both of the previous commissioners said that we hear you, we're doing all we can legally. As far as existing zoning and legal remedies, we can potentially enforce now. Staff is looking into those type of things that may be able to be some type of remedy or something as far as dumpsters and things. We won't know till staff has a chance to look at that. So, we'll continue to do what we can within the law with existing litigation. And they both said before, "Come fight, speak, we hear you on impacts of things that develop in your neck of the woods." Last Friday, I participated with a state superintendent on behalf of the board and the NCAA for the schools. He's the school superintendent, McGreen. Continue to advocate for policies and laws that will benefit our school systems as far as planning on a level playing field. We talked about calendar flexibility because we have early colleges here and try to help parents with the calendar flexibility. The 80/20 grading situation that gives them, that's not taking a fair opportunity to look at growth compared to one day. Nobody wants to be judged on one day out of a year. As far as from our perspective, the lottery was passed by the voters in the state, and the right amount of money is not being returned to the counties to use for capital. We're a Tier 3 county. The tier system gives us a disadvantage. You know, from 40 North, basically, we could be a lower-tiered county, which would open up revenue for our school systems and potentially capital for us to use for school construction. We basically now get nothing because we're a Tier 3 county. The capital money that was made available from the legislature over the last several years has all gone to the 80 Tier 1 and 2 counties. The 20 Tier 3 counties pay, I think, over 80, 90% of the taxes in the state, and we're getting punished because we do things right and we continue to be a top county in the state, if not the country, one of the top economic counties, so we continue to deal with growing pains and having to build schools. We'll have to continue working with our school systems and our municipalities to continue trying to do balanced growth. I attended the groundbreaking on behalf of staff and our board for the Weathers Creek High School. We're all pleased to get that underway. And so, hope everyone has a great Easter, but we appreciate the taxpayers trusting us to advocate and fight for them. We do, we hear you. It's not falling on deaf ears, but we're doing all we can legally within the remedies we can legally do. So, we hear you, keep sending us information, keep complaining to your legislators, state and federal, depending on the topic. They need to understand that they live here and they represent you, too. They're a little more insulated from you guys than we are. So, we also advocate the information you guys send us to the state and federal legislators because that's our job. But we impact your life on a daily basis more than any other elected official because you can touch, feel, and see and talk to us easier than you can them, but that does not release the responsibility they have to represent you effectively. And, you know, we've even sent signs to some of our legislators that says, "Remember who sent you here. The people in Raleigh or Washington didn't elect you." So, I think that's something we all have to keep in mind as we communicate to us and to our legislators other places. We do represent you, and we need to do all we can to represent the majority of you as best we can. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a quick alibi. If you're aware of, especially in the rental community, that something is, was a four-bedroom, and now you're seeing it marketed, marketed as 11-bedroom, get that information to our clerk, just if you can show the proof of notification that how it's being advertised. If you can share that with our clerk, he'll be real easy to find on our website. And share that information, please.
Any new business?
I just want to say, too, one more thing. When you guys send us stuff and you copy all of us, we can't legally reply to you to all, so please keep in mind, the chairman or somebody is forwarding that information to staff to look at. So, don't think any of us, to Melissa's point last meeting, we all hear you, see you, and we're all making sure somebody is working on your problem. Don't assume, because we all don't reply to you, that we're not listening or fighting or listening to you, because we are. We just can't legally reply, all of us at one time.
And one thing I would like to add on this, too, on the legislative side, senators and House members, I know everybody kind of hits the ones that represent us here in Ardell, but hit the ones across the entire state because they're the ones voting on things, they're the ones, you've got people in Wilmington, Asheville, Wilkes County, Alexander County, Mecklenburg County voting on bills and things that affect us here.
A lot of these issues are nonpartisan.
Yeah.
They just need to know there's problems throughout the state. They may not be having them, but most of these issues are quality of life issues, not partisan political issues.
Any new business? County managers report?
Just two things to report. I know that some people, well, actually, several people contacted us about our website being down. That was not in-house with the county. That was our host company that hosts our website. It was down, but it is back up. So, thankful that it is back up, but I just want to make sure that everybody knows that wasn't an in-house issue, it was the company that hosts our website, but it is back up. And also, that we will be closed on Friday for Good Friday, so, and we'll reopen on Monday.
Thank you, ma'am. We did have a closed session this afternoon in accordance to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A3, Attorney-client Economic Development, North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A4, and Property Acquisition in accordance to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A5, with no action taken. Brings us down to the end of tonight's meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion.
Hope everybody has a wonderful, safe, happy Easter.
Motion to adjourn by Commissioner Brown. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.